Really?
Yeah.
So it's true.
To like farm the table right out of there.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of been the goal, you know, how you take care of your backyard.
Yeah.
Take care of the place.
You could say very good.
Love it. Do it.
That's a good idea. We're not satisfied with the change.
Well, and you have something more to work on, more strategic plan, literally, easier you get there. You're not a talker. That's how it works.
Yep.
Alright. You're gonna be a little bit of a...
It's not like, you know, after the decision day.
Then I'm gonna be traveling.
Yep.
It's like interesting years.
Running out on their, rest is all good.
I'd love to have a piece of something like that.
I'd be happy to do that. I love it because it's a little sort of a key to you.
There has to be success.
Oh, those two things are no problem. I mean, you know, dry acres, you're like, you're like, frame your own mind. I would also, I think so.
I think so.
On preference.
Kevin's really, he's talking about this, I think.
Yeah.
He'll leave his agency.
Yep.
Care about each other and report to it.
Well, but you also have to be disciplined, and that's where a lot of people lose momentum maybe.
Right.
They go out and they're just like, and then they, you have to keep it in.
Very good. Welcome to the public hearing in the regular meeting of the city commission on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. At this time, I will call to order the public hearing. If we get a roll call, please.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
President.
George.
Yes.
Money.
President.
Beyonce.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, the city commission will hear public comments on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. All persons wishing to comment shall be given the opportunity to do so. Any person addressing the commission shall do so at the podium and state his or her name and to direct their comments directly to the commission. In the event that many people wish to comment, as I presiding officer may determine that each person speaking shall limit his or her comments to three minutes. As the presiding officer, I may terminate any public comments that are unreasonably lengthy and violate the city's rules of procedure for the city commission meetings or unrelated to the subject of the public hearing. At this time, is there any public comments on the city budget proposed? Okay, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public, the public hearing.
Thank you. Do we have support?
This is money I support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Swam.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Beyonce.
Yes.
Thank you. Very good. Andrew.
I'm Nate Babcock, the pastor of Buchanan Christian Church. Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we recognize that you are the ultimate source of the good things we enjoy in this community. We give you thanks for them. Lord, we pray that you'd help us in this community to be patient with the road construction that's going on. Help us to be slow to anger and both when we're driving and online. Lord, help us to have better control of ourselves. Help us to be good neighbors, Lord, to one another. Lord, thank you for the members of this commission. Pray your blessing upon their deliberations. Grant them wisdom. And, Lord, we also pray your blessing on the city manager and all the other folks that either work for this city as employees or just volunteers that care about making this a good place to live. May you bless them as well. And we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
President.
George.
Yes.
Money.
President.
Beyonce.
Yes.
You have a form.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
This is money I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have, thank you. Roll call, please.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Beyonce.
Yes.
And Weeden.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We do not have any scheduled matters from the floor. At this time, we'll reports departments, committees and boards. Community development director, Richard Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Rich Murphy, community development director, a few items for you this evening. First item, I'm very excited to have before you, which is the application for economic incentives from a local developer and business operator, Dustin Jankoviac and his partner Alicia Rettrenzbottom. They are of Second and Main fame in Niles, if you're aware, and other projects. And they have presented a very detailed vision of acquisition and build-out of a new restaurant at one oh eight West Front Street. So, I know that you've received the details before you in terms of what is planned. Couple things about the request I want to make very clear. One is that this is a request for conditional approval. As you're aware, these are reimbursable forgivable loans that will only be paid after the project's completed and the invoices are submitted, at which time there will be other paperwork that's required. So we're asking for conditional approval. Second point is it's budgeted for. It's in my budget, so I have it covered in this year's budget. And so, I want to invite the team up here to say a few words about the projects and certainly if you have any questions. One thing I would say, this is a significant proposal of acquisition of a property and build-out in excess of four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Would that, I'll ask Dustin to say a few words.
Hi, good evening. I don't know if you guys know about Second and Main or what we're all about. You know, when we opened up the shop in Niles, the whole point was to create community, to create a gathering place for everybody to jump in. And, you know, from the very beginning, the goal was always, you know, hey, we wanted to open something in Niles, but our second level was always Buchanan. You know, to give you a little background on me, my dad owned buildings downtown Buchanan for almost twenty years. I grew up shoveling sidewalks and all of that good stuff. I had my office at Honor Credit Union for four years when I was in finance and mortgage, and I had an office for three years right next door to Gary Z's. So, there's a pretty big love for the community. It's a place we've always seen ourselves as wanting to be, and this project, I think, is a good complement to what you guys are doing here. You know, to give you a little more background, you know, I think Patrick kind of has an idea. We kind of grew up together, went to college together, we worked together for a long time, but we own three or four buildings downtown Niles. We've developed those buildings, we've brought those back to life. One of them has a very prominent gem in it, Elevate Twenty-four. Another one has Radio Shack, and Airbnb's on the second and third floor, and you know, in total, we probably have close to two million in investment over there. So our goal is to build this space out and not just create, it's not just going to be a coffee shop. If you haven't been to Second and Main yet, try it, try us out, but the goal is to have a full kitchen and to create more of a breakfast and lunch type of cafe. Imagine Mason Jar Cafe meets Coffee Shop World. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions on the project at all.
Nothing right now for Rich, nothing.
When are you expected to close?
So we just went under contract on the space. My goal, knowing what's outside right now, is to, I'm working with the Frantic Country Heritage. Dan Carlson will be the contractor on it. We're thinking we're going to be done with the project by February. And then we're going to essentially move our second piece, is we have a commissary kitchen in Niles too. We're going to move that commissary kitchen to the Buchanan space. That building's getting sold right now, and there's a restaurant going in, so we'll get removed from it. But we want to maintain those ten other businesses that are utilizing the space and not displace their businesses and have them take steps back. So, it'll be more than just a coffee shop, it'll be, you know, transfer of ten other businesses that bake and make vanilla. We have a tea company in there, Free Strike Candy, Buck Town Latties is in there. So, it'll be a good little project for everybody.
Fantastic.
So, awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I usually vote no on these. I mean, I pretty much have a pretty strong history of voting no on all of them. I want the businesses, but I think the businesses, having been a businessman myself, I never went to city hall to ask for anything. I just wanted them to stay on my way. So, that's my stand on it.
Very good. Alright, I'll take a motion.
This is money I'd have moved to approve the preliminary economic incentive application to Second and Main and one oh eight West Front as presented.
Very good. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Tony gave me the explanation this morning, but I'd like to have it on record as to why we're kind of doing this backwards. You know, there's a whole stream of things that we should have and could have done, and I'd just like to have it on the record as to why we're doing it this way.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go over our conversation this morning. As you know, with some of the issues we've had with this program before, we've restructured it out, with the Stranger Wine Company in this, so that now it is set up as a forgivable loan. So if they do all the performance stuff, they do. If not, we put a lien on the property to recover it. Secondly, we're now not the first money, and we're money after everybody else has done their thing. So we're really structuring this to be assistance and not the catalyst that gets it going, so, to help the deal work. So, we're really bringing it before you so that it's allocating the budget. Deb knows it's coming, and then as long as they do those next steps they need to, we'll complete the transaction. So that's kind of how we're doing it, different than we had previously.
Thank you.
Yeah, my only question for Tony was typically they own the property already, so as long as our investment is post-close, I met the program guidelines, I was fine.
Roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Beyonce.
No.
Weeden.
Yes.
And Swam.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Kerry.
Item number two, consider approval of lifted craft cannabis microbusiness permit renewal at three zero three Carroll Avenue.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, this is the annual renewal, renewal for our microbusiness, lifted craft cannabis. They have presented their application for their annual renewal at three oh three Carroll Avenue. They have paid their fees, and we are conducting the backgrounds per the Buchanan Police Department, so they are in compliance with this submittal, and I would recommend approval. I would also like to add that RJ Walpole is here to represent lifted this evening, so if you have any questions, he can answer.
At this time, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have support?
This is money I support.
Thank you. Discussion?
Just, how's business going?
We're plugging away.
Yeah?
It's actually, it's going well, yeah. We're doing better today than we were last year, so.
How's the micro model shifted in the last year?
It's hard, it's hard to compete with the big guys. I mean, it just is number-wise, but I, we're hanging in there, and thankfully, the community has accepted us well, so we're doing good.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Beyonce.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three, consider approval of Red Bud Roots Cannabis Adult Use and Medical Process Affirmats at four fifty-five Post Road.
You'll remember that Red Bud does, there's a two cycles, this is cycle number two, so I have received the applications for the cannabis adult use and medical process permits at four five five Post Road. Submittals have been presented in compliance, they have paid for their fees. We have conducted the backgrounds already this year for the operators of Red Bud, so my recommendation is approval of the renewal.
Very good. Thank you, Rich. I'll take a motion this time.
I also move.
Thank you. Do we have support?
This is money I support.
Thank you. Discussion?
Peter, Dan and Alex usually give us an extensive update on cannabis industry.
That, that they do. I was gonna say, you know, yeah. I think it's about an hour, wasn't it?
Yeah. At least thirty minutes.
I forgot my speech at home, but it's quite great.
Alright, we'll make sure to relay that to them.
Tell them we have expectations. They literally sold you out.
Very good.
I do have one question for you since you're here.
Yes?
Are you aggressively pursuing the sale of some of the properties that you own? Because it, Red Bud, it's Red Bud, right?
Mm-hmm.
That you bought? I mean, because I believe city hall is going to start pushing hard for these empty buildings to get put on the market. There's only so much we can do, but I was pretty involved with Red Bud, and they're one of the few originals other than Rick Pennyagua when the whole thing got passed. And, you know, there's a couple of buildings that I've talked to them about, and there's a couple that I've told other people about, you know, and I'd like to see, I've reached out to South Bend Clinic on several occasions to try to get a Indiana clinic of some cor- sort in Buchanan. I reached out to Beacon, Beacon was going to go in the building behind us, that kind of fell apart, but you guys got some property that, you know, I would really like to see us reach out to them or do a little more progression in these sales. I mean, I'm not telling you, I'm asking you to.
Right.
Because I personally do it, because I know basically what y'all own out there, and I know what's up, and I was pretty intricately involved in a couple of them sales, not through a commission or nothing, just because I was a truck driver and I knew what buildings were up when you guys come into town. And actually, it wasn't even Red Bud, it was a gentleman that was working for, went to work for Red Bud after the fact. So, I would appreciate that, and if you could reach out to me once in a while, I'd appreciate it very much.
Of course.
Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Beyonce.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
And Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of lifted craft cannabis microbusiness permit renewal at three zero three Carroll Avenue.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, this is the annual renewal, renewal for our microbusiness, lifted craft cannabis. They have presented their application for their annual renewal at three oh three Carroll Avenue. They have paid their fees, and we are conducting the backgrounds per the Buchanan Police Department, so they are in compliance with this submittal, and I would recommend approval. I would also like to add that RJ Walpole is here to represent lifted this evening, so if you have any questions, he can answer.
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have support?
This is money I support.
Thank you. Discussion?
Just, how's business going?
We're plugging away.
Yeah?
It's actually, it's going well, yeah. We're doing better today than we were last year, so.
Alright. How's the micro model shifted in the last year?
It's hard, it's hard to compete with the big guys. I mean, it just is number-wise, but I, we're hanging in there, and thankfully, the community has accepted us well, so we're doing good.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Beyonce.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Kerry.
Thank you. Item number three, consider approval of Red Bud Roots Cannabis Adult Use and Medical Process Affirmats at four fifty-five Post Road.
You'll remember that Red Bud Roots does, there's a two cycles, this is cycle number two, so I have received the applications for the cannabis adult use and medical process permits at four five five Post Road. Submittals have been presented in compliance, they have paid for their fees. We are, we have conducted the backgrounds already this year for the operators of Red Bud, so my recommendation is approval of the renewal.
Very good. Thank you, Rich. I'll take a motion this time.
I also move.
Thank you. Do we have support?
This is money I support.
Thank you. Discussion?
Peter, Dan and Alex usually give us an extensive update on cannabis industry.
That, that they do. I was gonna say, you know, yeah. I think it's about an hour, wasn't it?
Yeah. At least thirty minutes.
I forgot my speech at home, but it's quite great.
Alright, we'll make sure to relay that to them.
Tell them we have expectations. They literally sold you out.
Very good.
I do have one question for you since you're here.
Yes?
Are you aggressively pursuing the sale of some of the properties that you own? Because it, Red Bud, it's Red Bud, right?
Mm-hmm.
That you bought? I mean, because I believe city hall is going to start pushing hard for these empty buildings to get put on the market. There's only so much we can do, but I was pretty involved with Red Bud, and they're one of the few originals other than Rick Pennyagua when the whole thing got passed. And, you know, there's a couple of buildings that I've talked to them about, and there's a couple that I've told other people about, you know, and I'd like to see, I've reached out to South Bend Clinic on several occasions to try to get a Indiana clinic of some cor- sort in Buchanan. I reached out to Beacon, Beacon was going to go in the building behind us, that kind of fell apart, but you guys got some property that, you know, I would really like to see us reach out to them or do a little more progression in these sales. I mean, I'm not telling you, I'm asking you to.
Right.
Because I personally do it, because I know basically what y'all own out there, and I know what's up, and I was pretty intricately involved in a couple of them sales, not through a commission or nothing, just because I was a truck driver and I knew what buildings were up when you guys come into town. And actually, it wasn't even Red Bud, it was a gentleman that was working for, went to work for Red Bud after the fact. So, I would appreciate that, and if you could reach out to me once in a while, I'd appreciate it very much.
Of course.
Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Beyonce.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
And Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Alright, item E, various boards and committee reports. We had a quick discussion. I think what we're going to do is just set the precedence with this placeholder for this meeting to inform the public that in the coming meetings in the next, well, for the coming years, for individuals who sit on the commission, who sit on additional boards, that the second meeting in the month, that we will ask that the commissioners who sit on those boards to give presentations of information that is occurring on those boards. A lot of it is due to the fact that we know that the public is uncertain of what these boards are working on, where they're at on the status of different activities, and, you know, how that, how the public can benefit from that information, and I think that the commissioners should be processing that information out to the, to the public, and it also holds the boards accountable to give us information to present to the public. So, if anybody has any current updates, something that they think that the public should be aware of, that the board is currently working on, that they sit on, feel free to do so. No?
Most certainly. You wanted it, we'll give it to you.
Thank you, Larry.
Actually, and I think this is a really good idea, because we have five members here who sit on these boards. I sit on the SMACUS board, I also sit on the water sewer board, but I, I would probably default to Mr. Swam for taking, let him take care of that.
I'll give you the water.
But on the SMACUS side, just five bullet items I have here, SMACUS remains fully staffed, and they do, and right, and right at this point, they are actively trying to pursue more people out there, and so they have potential candidates for that staffing. They have just remounted an old chassis, and it is being prepped for service, so there's going to be one more ambulance in the mix. They have a tentative agreement with their union, with their collective bargaining side, and there's only one item there, and that's basically long-term disability, and they're trying to work that out. Currently, they're in negotiation with the Cass County Ambulance Authority, and they continue to make progress on that. It's been a little bit of an ongoing confrontation back and forth, but it seems like it's about ready to be finalized. And just for a side note, SMACUS received two hundred and forty-eight priority one requests for coverage in this area, and at this time, they have achieved ninety-one percent of that performance. So, yeah, they're looking, they're looking pretty good, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swam?
Yeah, the water sewer side, you know, this board meets quarterly, so not, not as much detail to give. We just met for our first feasibility study kickoff conversation to explore expansion into Bertrand Township for water sewer service of some kind, between the future expansion they have at the aggregate pit potentially, and then the industrial park that they have out there. So, great opportunity. We've talked a little bit about it historically around here about stabilizing your water sewer bills. That is an opportunity for that to happen. As a reminder, funding, funds that are spent in those communities are paid for by those communities, so Buchanan, in a sense, is not subsidizing Buchanan Township or Bertrand Township. We all are responsible to cover our own costs associated with those charges. We just passed the preliminary budgets that were sent to each board. Lead service continues to be an ongoing focus for the team, both identification and replacement as those occur. We get a compliance update on where we're at with our levels each month in terms of solids and phosphorus and other, other scientific terms that I don't typically follow, but we know where we're supposed to be, and we get our reporting on that, so I don't have a great answer for that, but water loss is my favorite one to track. So, where are we losing water? Because it costs us a lot of money to pump it out of the ground if it's not getting to its end destination, that's a problem. Hence why we have the construction project we do right now, is we're fixing holes in the system to make sure we're capturing all of our water. And then capital planning and budgeting long-term, you know, with Tim leaving as of the first of July, there will be a gap there that Tony has already received, has filled and reached contract on, so, all things good in the water sewer part, making progress. When you see roads getting dug up, that's progress for a water sewer, so.
Amen. Ms. George?
I can give an update.
Awesome.
I sit on Bard, and we created a disc golf commi- committee, and we're really working on like, the logo for it, how it's all mapped out, and we got, we've gotten pretty far in that endeavor, but our target date for the opening is August first, and everybody's pretty excited for that. I know the disc golf, Bangarangatane, what is it? Is that right? Bangarangatane?
I have.
Wow. They have been really instrumental in getting this project started, and like.
Is that the name of the group that's searching this? Is that their?
It's something like that, I forget. I feel like that's right, but they have came out and helped us for the cleanup day that we hosted early May. They're just, it's amazing to see how many guys actually like disc golf, because I never realized it was this big, so they're, they're volunteering like, everything that you can think of, so we've been working really hard on that, and I can't wait to see that. And then for Catherine Park, we're kind of just waiting on an answer for a grant that we applied for, so we're pretty excited as a commission, I feel like, to get that going, so, that's what's happening in the Bard board.
Thank you. In addition to that, from the Bard, from the township, they brought ten thousand dollars to the table to help make this happen, and I know that that was something, it was very important to us to make that happen for the city, and we're really thankful to the township, and they've been instrumental in making this really happen very quickly. I know that was something, it was, I was waiting for it, so.
Yes, I'm like.
No, it's been fantastic, and a lot of volunteer time's going to go into this. It won't cost the city or the township any additional money, so we're thankful to the team that they got put together. Patrick and I sit on the landfill board, just in case we weren't doing enough roads, I don't know if we currently have a timeline, but they will be redoing Chamberlain all the way up to Mayflower at some point, and I think Patrick and I will ask with all of our power to hold off as long as possible, because, you know, the state decided to do all their roads at the same time, too. So, we're just going to end up in a cocoon, so anybody who has to work outside of town, they're going to have to dial in, I guess. They're currently working on an expansion to the east side of the landfill, so at one time, the state was trying to pass an additional tonnage fee, which of course would have tanked our landfill and would have hurt us beyond question. Three Rivers would have been, you know, anybody who was on the border for a landfill would have, would have not existed, let's put it that way. So, I believe that that's currently paused, and they're working through that details, and I can't even imagine what it would have been like to go to five dollars a ton or whatever the heck they were trying to propose, so.
They changed that to a dollar twenty, with me being on that energy and environment with the MLL. I was the only outsider there, and of course, I had a thousand questions, and of course, I got a thousand eyeballs, but I plunged right in, and it's the. And it's the east side of the state Detroit. I got lied to, expected it. Um, didn't call them out, wait till the next meeting, I'll call them out on their lies. They said that we couldn't raise our rates individual of the state, and they're having a big deal with radiation coming across from Canada. And I mean, when we say radiation, we're talking clothes, it's been worn and it's very low radiation, so it's not a panic thing. But, uh, Whitmer, our inner infinite wisdom, you know, wants to finance all this stuff through extortion fees and taxes.
Right.
And since it's that side of the state, they think they can do that. And I just told them that this side of the state pretty much gives you a so, um, leave us alone, let us do our own thing.
Right.
And we have a community-owned landfill down here, and we have a privately-owned landfill down here. And if we're operating where our fees are right, leave us alone.
Right.
You know?
Right.
But I kinda fell on deaf ears, but I made sure I made it very loud, cuz I was the only one when I was getting some serious eyeballs.
And I think it justified her logic on that, or whoever's logic it was, to prevent some Canadian trash to come in here. Uh, not that Canadians are trash, but they're trashed itself. Uh, not, not-
You charge them tariffs.
Not recog- yeah, exactly. And not recognizing Ohio and Indiana have a, have great access to our landfills, so, yeah, it would've-
See, I don't really understand, Mark, cuz I did ask the question. Well, why can't you charge a fee and right away I got told you can't? Well, the word can't usually means I don't wanna do the work I need to, to do it on a basis. Cuz we've taken, almost all of our garbage comes from Garrett.
Right.
You know, so I mean.
At our landfill, most of our garbage is locally sourced.
Well, it used to be Garrett. It was a lot of Garrett stuff.
Yeah, they, we, we pulled back most of the landfill garbage we take in is, is locally sourced.
So, I mean, they have rescinded from five dollars a ton to a dollar twenty, but that's still a four hundred percent increase.
Absolutely.
And that's gonna trickle down. And I mean, you know, that goes into the water bills. Our water bill's gonna go eight percent, but we have no choice. All you gotta do is walk out the door. Um, and I'm doing everything I can to suck that in, but we gotta get businesses into town. We gotta get rid of our, uh, vacant properties. As long as I'm on the topic and we're doing this right now, can the city get rid of property that's deemed a park? Or are, is it on an individual park basis?
I, I will have to check the charter to be sure a hundred percent when I look at her. It requires, here's a required vote of the population to the general population.
For a park, yeah, you can't get rid of parks.
On all parks or just parks that are, no, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I can't. I know there's a couple like the Riverfront Park down by the boat launch.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's paperwork there that is deemed by the state. And then I know the property that was given to the city out where the dog park and the baseball fields, that was given to the city and that was deemed-
The disc golf course, right, where that is.
Right, that has to be a sports complex.
I will find out the exact language.
Because we have several that we deem parks that were really parks. Harder Park comes to mind on Front Street.
Yeah, but I believe once you make it a park, I don't think, you have to go there.
But I don't believe we made it a park.
I see, I see where he's going. Yeah, I mean, we can, we'll, we'll, I get where he's going. We'll be, let's look into-
Yeah, we'll look at it. There's generally two different restrictions. Once you take DNR money and put into one of those properties, the DNR puts a D restriction on it. But once we, and I'm pretty sure, I'll let it verify, once we put something, our park direct plan is a park, it is officially deemed a park at that point, requires a vote. But we'll make sure a hundred percent, I sent an email to you guys.
We can take it up the next time. Thank you.
They're calling above the park, perfect timing.
Can I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
Um, I just wanna make it clear too, cuz I don't think I really made it clear. In case you didn't know, the disc golf course is going to be at McCoy Creek, so just, uh, make that clear.
Very good.
Centennial Park.
Thank you, Eric.
Centennial Park, some people know it as that too.
And I wanna make it very clear for her, that the, the, uh, what do you call them? The holes for the, what do you call them? Holes?
Yes.
Baskets, baskets are removable, so it's not gonna destroy the snowmobile.
Yeah, nobody wanna be near it. Yeah, the one that's, they're gonna not have that one going during that time of the year, so during the winter, they won't have-
I know, but if you still got the basket there, it might make a-
Yes, it is really cool.
And they have to stop.
Correct. That's just like a tree.
Alright.
Alright, uh, this time we'll move on to item C, clerk department, city clerk.
Hello.
Hello.
We have an August fifth, uh, fifth election, just so you're aware. There's no early voting, cuz it's a local election. Um, just giving a heads up, absentee ballots will probably go out within the next three weeks, so if you're on that list, you'll see that. If you're not and you wanna be, contact me, I will make sure you're taken care of. Um, but yeah, so it should be nice, the only thing on there is the library proposal. Um, as soon as I get the ballot language done, then I'll be posting on the website for anybody that wants to see. If you ever wanna become an election worker, please come see me, I always need people. Um, but that's all I have for that. That's it, just a little update, it's coming.
Very good.
Thank you. Is that just a renewal or is that a-
It is a renewal from expired mileage, um, so, it's a ten-year mileage, so they'll go on for August. And then LMC has decided to put, uh, two proposals on for November. One is, uh, it's kind of like a renewal wrapped in with a new one. Um, so we'll have two, two elections in the off year. Our favorite as clerks.
Did LMC ever pay for the last one that they backed out of?
Uh, which was that on August and November? They don't have to, they backed out with enough time because we have to hold those elections. August, your twenty-twenty year, even year, August and November is all on us. It's the presidential primaries and the special elections that we can charge for. So we'll get our money back, except for the only thing I can't charge for the library is my pay, um, but I can charge for the election workers. We have agreements in place for that, so.
LMC asked for that special election and all the schools jumped on it and they backed out.
They backed out, so it fell onto the schools because they backed out with enough time, so.
I did wanna update on the plan commission too. The master plan is out there somewhere. Eventually we'll get it. And then the contract for the short-term rental, uh, we met with, was it New Buffalo or South Haven?
St. Joe, sir.
St. Joe, excuse me. She come down here, very educational hour. Was supposed to have somebody from New Buffalo at the next plan commission, so we will have this done, we will have this done in eight months.
Very good, I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, uh, we do not have any unfinished business. At this time, new business. Uh, item A, delinquent utility bills applied to summer taxes, considering authorizing city administration to take the necessary actions to add delinquent utility bills to the reasonable parties for summer taxes.
So, normal every year, this is just delinquent over six months, just gets added to their taxes. We just have to have permission to add it.
Very good. Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion.
I move to authorize city administration to add delinquent utility bills to the list of the responsible party's summer taxes.
Thank you, do we have support?
Money will support.
Roll call.
This, this has been doing, you've been doing this right along, I mean, you are now.
Yeah, they do it every year.
Been doing it for-
You have to ask for permission every year?
Twenty years at least or more.
Okay.
Very good. Roll call.
Weeden?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
And Gionski?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to start, I'm sorry, Your Honor.
That's okay.
Um, sidewalks, mowing, like for these part, um, bank-owned properties or, are we gonna, can we, do we do that?
Yeah, we do that when we get the long, the ordinance for long grass, Mike's guys can notice. They go out, they mow, and we clip it onto their taxes right away.
We're gonna do that for sidewalks and stuff then too?
Sidewalks, the sidewalk program, we'll be doing that, and I'll explain that to you guys when we get to the budget.
Alright, great.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item B, Resolution twenty-two-five dot zero-five slash one-seven, consider resolution of support and commitment for match for the Michigan Department of Transportation and Community Services, category D.
I'm gonna start with, this is a construction project for two years from now, so, we'll start with that. This is an opportunity to do some work that it does need to be done, and we're just trying to recapture some of the money it's gonna cost us to do by asking the state of Michigan for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the million-dollar project cost. About half the money, five hundred thousand's roadwork that's need to be done. Half the money, five hundred thousand is for, uh, water lines need to be redone. What we're talking about is Remus Drive from Detroit to Lake Street. And Detroit Street from Remus Drive to Harlem, that area in town over there. The reason we need to redo the mains over there is they're actually very shallow, so when we get very cold months in the wintertime, the people over there have to leave their faucets and trickle to keep those lines from freezing up. So the idea, if we need to go in there and do those water lines anyway, and we can charge that roadwork to the water, lines have to be redone, and if we get the quarter million dollars from the state of Michigan for the stuff not over the water, our out-of-pocket from general fund will be minimized if we can receive that grant. This grant can only be used for the smaller local roads like Detroit Street and Harlem, couldn't use it on a Red Bud or a Front Street or one of those. It has to be a local street that she was on.
Very good. Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion.
I'll so move.
Thank you, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, roll call please.
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Gionski?
Yes.
And Weeden?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item C, fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-six budget, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, got a presentation of our, this year's budgets being proposed to you guys for adoption. Um, but going to all the detail you want, you guys have had, I think, more detail than you've had previously over the last month, so I'm gonna kinda keep it strategic, higher level for you guys in the audience tonight, but again, please, if you have any specifics, let me know. To start with, why do we do this? It really, that the goal is to align what resources we have available to the goals you guys set and the community has, and we went through a few months ago. Secondly, it ensures that we're spending the money properly. We wanna make sure these public dollars are spent to the most value we can do. And lastly, for, for the department heads and myself, it provides day-to-day guidance of how we run operations. Because where you guys put resources at and allocate resources us to spend, it tells us what your priorities are. So that really is the reason we put this budget together to begin with. How are we funded? There's three different main pools of money we get here in the community that fund operations. The first is property taxes and assessments. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. Second is enterprise funds, that's our water and sewer. I'll talk a bit more about each of those. And finally, it's the fees. It's the permits for right-of-way permits, building permits, rentals of the city center, uh, plots in the cemetery, those sorts of things. Those are kinda the three legs of the stool to support local government financially. I'm gonna start a little bit about the property tax distribution, because everybody sees that number they write on their tax check every, twice a year to come to the city. What a lot of people don't realize is, we are collecting taxes on behalf of a lot of other entities. This chart you have in front of you here actually shows of that property tax we bring in, what actually is spent locally, which is just about thirty percent, which is not a lot of what we keep in. So, of the five point four million dollars that we collect every year for the city and other people, only about two million of that stays here in the city. The other three point four million goes to the county, the state, the schools, county parks, libraries, Smackus, Dial-A-Ride. We just collect that and distribute to those people. So, when people are writing that check, they don't realize that of that five point four million that we're collecting every year, only about two million stays here locally to be spent on operations. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that where all this money goes. I'm gonna start a little bit with the general fund budget. This gives you an overview of where our, our general fund money is going this year, it's three point eight million dollars. Uh, Department of Public Works, there's not a lot there new operationally than what you've seen before with their budget. Um, some capital needs have been deferred that we're dealing with. Um, cemetery, that budget's up a little bit from last year. The reason for that is, we need a vault cart, we need a mower for out, there's some deferred. There's some work at the, at the, at the chapel we know with some, just some staining, the stained glass window. So in that two sixty-one is not only the salaries to maintain it, but also some capital needs in that area. Fire department is pretty similar to last year's budget, when they had changed, we have about sixty thousand dollars for new air packs in there. Um, if we get a grant that's pending, that'll be sixty thousand dollars of budget money freed up, but right now we're carrying that in the general fund budget. Um, community development, you've seen, you'll, you'll see a bump in there this year from last year's, but that's due to some restructuring and some new programs. We're moving code enforcement to build in there because it is quality of life issues in our neighborhoods. But there's also, to Commissioner Viganski's question, sidewalks. We have sixty thousand dollars for new sidewalks in the community in that budget this year, and that's gonna be run out of there. How we're gonna structure that program, it's gonna be fifty-fifty? The city will pay half the cost for the new sidewalks, the property will pay half the cost for the new sidewalks. If the property does not have the cash available for their half of the sidewalks when we do it, they will have the option of going on their property taxes over three years. The idea, if we keep putting money into this pool every year and we keep money coming in, that in three or four years, we'll have a fairly decent funded sidewalk program now in the community that every year we just keep rotating through the community, doing the walks that we need to do. So we'll ask for new allocations on that sidewalk program as long as it remains a priority for the people sitting up here. Each year until we get that fund, the standing on its own and we're just collecting along every year. Um, the other thing in there is we've got money for the demolition of two to three houses again this year, if we can do that. So there's a lot of like cleanup, there's also money for Catherine Park in there. We know we've got the ma- one of two things gonna happen. Well, no, we get that grant this summer, we'll do a big project. If we don't get that grant, we still have a hundred thousand dollars to do some work in Catherine Park. So regardless, Catherine Park has some money in this budget. City manager's office, there's not much change in there. A little legal and engineering money for some of the capital improvement planning we need to do and some other structuring issues. Um, nothing really new in the clerk or elections budget or assessing, nor treasurer. Buildings and grounds is pretty steady. You'll notice the city commission budget is a lot less this year. That's because there are a lot of, I'm gonna call them fluffy line items in your budget that were used for whether they be incentive grants, which may be going over the DDA with that being reestablished, or you guys had things for, the line below here, I'm calling the affinity groups. That is farmer's market, tent shop theater, the comments committee. That affinity group number, that eighty thousand dollars, that used to be covered in your budget. I thought it was important to kinda pull that out so we knew what you were spending on that kinda stuff, cuz again, that's something we're looking at maybe the DDA taking over moving forward. Barb, we have about twenty-nine thousand dollars in there, that's nothing new, and about twenty-five thousand dollars for ambulance service. So that overall, that three point eight million dollars, three point nine million, those are our general fund dollars we are proposing to be spent this year. In your path, you got that all detailed out and, and shown everything in there. So right now for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, our overall expenses are looking to come in about three point six million dollars at the end of this next month coming up here. We're projecting three point eight eight million of general fund expenses for next year. Uh, main driver of that's we're taking on a lot of new debt service. About a half million dollars in new debt service for next year we're taking on. So if you think about that our budget's only going up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well, it's taking on five hundred thousand dollars in new debt service, you need to realize that we're going with a really thin budget, we're just spending money where we have to. We wanna take a year to kinda reset everything as we get through all this construction work. This gives us the year to do that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. So moving on to the water and sewer budget, this has been before the Joint Water Sewer Board, it's been reviewed and approved by them. It's also been before the township board last week, as timing-wise, they came up first and they have reviewed and approved this as well, just for your knowledge. So talking a little bit about that, the water and sewer fund are our enterprise funds. That means they operate independently of our general fund money, and they can only be used to cover costs related to water and sewer. With those, we have very strict regulations on how we run those things, how we manage those funds and all that. And finally, the rate setting on that, when we do the rates, like we just did those rate increases, we tie our rates to what it actually costs to run our system, whether it's debt service, the people running it, equipment, upgrades we need to do, emergency repairs, all that. Those rates tie directly to what we approve every year for the budget on water and sewer. So, our overall operating revenue for the enter- for the enterprise funds is projected to be, uh, three point nine five million dollars for this next year. Uh, that's compared to three point seven nine million dollars projected for this current fiscal year we're in here. Uh, there, there's two reasons that explain that delta. Actually, our current year had thirteen months' worth of revenue booked to it against twelve months of expenses, so it looked financially better performing than it actually was. But that's offset a little bit by the fact we have a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar TMF grant coming in for blood service exploration identification. On the sewer side, our expenses for twenty-five, twenty-six are projected to be about one point one two million, as compared to about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for this year. A couple of main reasons for that, is Commissioner Swem, uh, mentioned earlier. Uh, we had some changeover at the plant operator-wise. We went a little heavy on that budgeting just to be safe on what it was gonna cost us to do that. If we had gone higher firm, we expect to do that cheaper than that by what we're working on right now, and some capital expenditures. So those are really where those deaths, those numbers have gone up, and some associated debt service for their operations. Um, on the water side, right now, our expenses are projected for this up to the year for one point three seven million, um, compared to six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in expenses for this current year. That's all that TMF grant. That's all grant-funded, it's about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we're gonna have for blood service identification, looking at potholing, all that sort of thing. So that's where you see that delta, excuse me, between those two numbers right now. So, for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the net revenue for the water and sewer funds is estimated to be, uh, one point two million as compared to minus a hundred and sixty-five, sorry, a hundred and sixty-six thousand for this year, but a few things on that. Uh, the negative revenue is, is being bridged by available reserves we have, so it's not like we're going negative, we actually have- Uh, the negative revenue is, is being bridged by available reserves we have, so it's not like we're going negative. We actually have savings, for lack of a better word, to cover that. The reasons for why we've seen this change are uh, we're now showing the debt service in the water and sewer fund this year, which we didn't do in previous years. It was just kinda floating out there, so we're actually showing it as part of our expense for operating that this year. Um, the thirteen months of revenue I referenced in this previous fiscal year make a difference. Um, moving to new operating structure that I talked about with how we're doing that, and candidly, we're taking a pretty conservative approach. We went conservative with both our revenue being a little less than we expect and with our expenses being a little higher than we expect, just to be safe with the transition year we're gonna be having in these operating areas. Alright, so with this significant amount of construction underway, really our focus for twenty five, twenty six is gonna be on city operation and the management of those projects. So for this next year, our goal is just to make sure we manage these projects in the best financial way we can to minimize the cost of them for the community. Still lots of unknowns out there, but been, beyond all that, our focus is gonna be on capital improvement planning. We know we have a lot of that deferred here. We don't wanna find ourselves in the situation we are this year where everything's breaking at once or about to break and projects are happening not on our schedule but being dictated to us because of failing resources. Um, improving our standard operating procedures and, and policies, we've been talking about that, so that's gonna be coming. And then quality of life issues. We're gonna be starting the rental registration program this year to get all of our rental properties registered. Blight elimination, code enforcement, demolition program that I referenced, park improvements, and the sidewalk replacement program. So for staff and the budget, it's really focusing on these areas, making sure we get the construction projects done in the best way we can. Focusing on how we do things here within the city hall and our various operating arms, and then just quality of life issues. Starting to address those things. During that time period, we'll start planning for that next phase of capital projects. So issues isn't overall, there's a lot of things we talked about. We did our planning session and priority session with you guys. Uh, some of the capital expenses you're gonna be seeing this year, new voting equipment, patrol cars, the fire department, air packs, some backup generation we found out we needed with all the spring storms on our buildings. Um, equipment trailer, lawnmower, chipper, vault, chapel improvements, Catherine Park, couple vehicles, a lift station generator, um, some GIS upgrades for so that, you know, all of a sudden we're not out here at five thirty as a new water services found underneath the mill project and water shooting everywhere, so that we can better track and locate those things. Uh, the sidewalk replacement program, we've got budget to demo two or three houses. So I think this really aligns to when we had that priority session for you guys, what your goals and budget were, and I think the rest of our budget, I hope, reflects what you were expecting to see this year. Um, with that, I went through a lot of stuff to spend that much money. Like I said, you guys have had a lot of detail on this. I, I'm hoping enough that you feel really comfortable going in, but I'm happy answering any questions you have.
One question I always get is the police department, don't take this personal, chief, is one-third of the budget up to one-half. Several years ago, that's the same way throughout the state, almost throughout the country. Does this, in that budget, does that reflect pensions?
Yes.
So we're paying for people that are retired?
Yeah.
Out of that budget?
Yeah, everything in here is everybody's pensions, everything else.
So it's gonna come with points, is that nobody wants to admit where we're not gonna be able to do what we're doing.
We're actually running some numbers now. Uh, Courtney and I had a call with MML and our retirement program now. Right now, we are a hundred percent funded, but as we're trending five years from now, we're only looking about ninety percent funding, so we need to do some things.
So we, um, and we've talked about this every, every audit, just about, and it fluctuates with the market conditions, right? There's a time when I first got on, we were a hundred and five percent funded or something like that, so it, it, it moves consistently with market conditions and the return of the fund, but uh, it, MML may have just that pension fund, so.
So we just reviewed our twenty twenty threes, they're gonna have our twenty twenty-
Not MML.
All right, that's, Mur, sorry, that's what I meant to say. Mur, yes, sorry.
There, so we reviewed twenty twenty three with them today, they're gonna have twenty twenty four for us next month, and then we'll start planning how we start to manage things moving forward.
The only reason why I bring it up is Europe did it, they cut pensions, government pensions, they cut them after you were collecting. The Teamsters, you know, very near and dear, got royally screwed, got twenty years in and got their budgets or their pensions cut in half and then cut again and maybe not at all. So I just, I'd like to get ahead of this somehow when we're negotiating this, to rein that in somehow.
Heard you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Appreciate the thoroughness.
Yeah, thanks Tony.
And the work sessions are really, you, you might wonder for anyone watching why we don't ask a lot of questions, but we spend a lot of time, especially in one or two work sessions where we get into the weeds on these asks and, and talk through the why and you'll have to go back on the videos and look at what date that was, 'cause I don't have it handy, but um, you'll be able to go back and look at those resources.
Yeah, and always we're looking to do the process better, so if you guys have any suggestions for the team, we're happy to incorporate those in the next year's process. And, and we've started to bring more detail to the budget this year. We're gonna continue to do that next year as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
And for everybody's information, that man there calls us back within three hours. If we leave him a message, if he doesn't pick up, he calls us back, or he calls us back at the end of the day on his way home. So, we have, and we're always, I think we're all digging all the time. You know, we're going a thousand different directions, and sometimes I send him some really random BS questions, but he's always there, he's always answering.
True. Very true.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time I will take a motion.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dot zero five slash one eight as presented.
Thank you. Do we have support?
This money I'll support feature.
Roll call please.
George.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Jansky.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
And Swam.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Can I just make one note, just so it's on public record?
Mm-hmm.
The resolution was just updated today, and it has the USDA reporting into your resolution, a new one, just so it's on public record. That's just because we have to report because of those funds that come in.
Yep.
So it was added to your resolution for it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Moving on, item C expenditures, considering approving expenditures for May twenty seventh in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and ninety-three cents.
There was just a couple of things, and Tony got back with me on this, um, repair for the overhead crane. I mean, isn't that under warranty?
Wrong person, waste water treatment plan.
Oh, it was waste water treatment?
Yeah, so it's not there.
Sorry, Mike.
Yeah, no, if, if it had been like the new DPW building fair question, sorry, that was a waste water treatment plan.
Okay.
Mike said, I don't have a crane.
You're safe, Mike.
Mike, glad you get a crane, man.
Um, how Mike's gonna want a crane?
Yeah.
Right.
I didn't know.
I'm sure you can find a use for it.
I was trying to figure out, you know, but that's, I will make, you know, if you want a motion, I'll make the most. I move to approve the expenditures in the amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and ninety-three cents as presented.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support it.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Money.
Yes.
Jansky.
Yes.
Weeden.
Yes.
Swam.
Yes.
And George.
Yes.
Josh Harris.
Okay, uh, at this time we do not have any communications. Uh, we will take public comment for non-agenda items only. Please keep your comments to three minutes and approach the podium and state your name for the record. Okay, seeing nobody approach, executive comments, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just gonna give a couple of quick comments on construction at the risk of my own life at this time. Talking contractor today, Hoven Wall, weather holds, is scheduled to be completed, street swept up a week from Friday. Uh, there were some mistaken signs put up at the top of the hill today by the sign people that was fixed within an hour. When the American Legion calls and says we have a beer delivery coming and it can't get through, I spring into action because that'll get you fired real quick. So that was taken care of. So that'll be done. It wants weather, we get some decent weather between now and then, a, a week from Friday. Uh, Culvert substantially complete. If you've been down there, it's looking really good. That should be buttoned up next week as well. Uh, Jerry gave an update on Shermer Parkway and the trail, so these next three weeks are gonna be our worst three weeks of construction, but once those three projects button up, things are gonna start feeling better, 'cause the road construction's gonna be starting, coming this way here. Um, just for everybody in general, they should be past this corner here this week. After that, your new access to city hall, to layman's, and those will be coming down Shermer, and everything will be in much better shape coming here. It's not Shermer, sorry. Skyway. Been doing that all week. Thank you. Uh, paving projects coming up. Uh, Liberty and Ryanirison will be milled on June thirteenth. They will be paved on June fourteenth. While that is going on, is Liberty is the detour route, the new detour route will be Skyway all the way down here and into downtown, so for those two days.
Or Facebook.
So we'll be all over that. Uh, River Street and Red Bud will be milled on June twenty fifth and done on June twenty sixth. I know these are a pain for everybody in the community, but considering where we started on these, in the February, we realized we had a problem. We had to figure out how to pay for them. We got a bid, and we worked in paving work this early in the season. We, a little bit of luck on our side. I know it doesn't feel like it, but there really was. Um, downtown, phase two, once they turn this corner here, or phase one, they'll start moving pretty well towards Front Street. Their road crews, the first junior, gonna start trailing their pipe crews in building roadway, so that'll start to help there. As everybody knows, phase two started downtown today. Light poles are coming down, removals are happening. Uh, we'll continue to update people as progress goes on that project.
Where is the clock and the present, and the plaque? Where are they gonna store that? 'Cause I know we need to save that clock, and we need to save that light.
No, 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 they are storing it. Severance taking it to their-
Are they? Is that what they're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, is that clock going back up?
Yes, it's getting restored and put back up, same with the light poles.
If you think Facebook's bad now, break, break that clock.
Oh, and by the way, Bucky is just fine. It'll be moving back.
Oh, I was wondering if that's-
I've heard the conspiracy. Bucky's okay.
You'll see.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
Yeah, I'll post the picture over. That was a fair question. That's a fair question.
The hatlers aren't underneath him now, are they?
Should say he's a little compact.
I saw him a couple of weeks ago, you know, so he's safe. He hasn't been stolen, regardless of what others may say.
The book of faces?
Yeah.
Somebody stole a C miss.
Yeah. It doesn't mean the staff's not gonna have a little fun with the rumor mill the next few weeks, so.
Oh, I am, so prepare yourself. Just letting you know right now.
I wanna see Mike riding into town out there. That's what I wanna see.
That's it, that's it, too. Or maybe even Tony.
Sounds like another parade in Buchanan.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jansky?
Um, I really don't have anything. I'm just really excited about everything that's going on, and I, I know we're all getting a lot of grief, and I'm getting it from family and I'm getting it from friends, and they just don't comprehend how much was going on and how much cheaper it is to do it all at once, but it was all about timing. I mean, all of this has been led, it's been leading up to this for nine years, and it was just all timing, and I guarantee you, another, any other city manager would have squashed a couple of these projects. We would not have done them with a weight.
Mm-hmm. Just like they've done in the past.
Just like they've done in the past.
Yep.
So thank you, Tony, and that's all I got.
Pretty good. Mr. Money?
Really? That's all I got.
Larry, just-
Well, first off, I wanna start out by saying thank you to Tony and the staff and everybody in this building who's put in so much time with this budget. This didn't come easy, and these ladies and gentlemen down here have worked extremely hard to do that, so I personally wanna say thank you. Uh, and I hope more people will be looking at this video and maybe can understand a little bit what's going on in the city. Uh, yeah, there was nobody ticked off probably even more than me this morning when I forgot that Front Street was being taken care of, and I was rushing to get to the Legion for a funeral, and I had to end up going up through the heights, back around, up down Dirty Liberty Street where all the dust is at, got my clean truck dirty, but you know what? We managed. And, and it's just like, um, everybody in town, uh, you know, it's a little, it's a little uncomfortable right now, but, uh, I think, I think we're have the process in place and we're gonna work through it. Uh, for those of you who are on the city webpage, uh, uh, the city manager and the staff are putting updates daily on this phone, and so, you know, we all know what's going on. And for that, I truly appreciate everything that's going on. Kicking off that, there's a couple of people that I wanna acknowledge, and I always try to do this because uh, this guy says Buchanan more than you probably know. Uh, uh, I wanna thank Mike, his DPW crew, his cemetery crew, uh, because without them, the city manager and all the queens will probably have been sitting in the grassy veterans, uh, uh, park or, uh, space this, yesterday, uh, because there was a huge malfunction with the trailer. Uh, I called Mike up and I, I, I know I'm not very pleasant at seven o'clock in the morning when things aren't going my way, uh, and, you know, and the parade is about to ensue and, and we have no bandstand. We have no place to have it. Uh, Mike writes, grabs five gallons of, uh,
Hydr.
hydraulic oil, shows up, makes a mess, but we had our bandstand. And so Tony could sit peacefully underneath that, shaded. Um, it was a great parade yesterday. People were skeptical, the American Legion. Uh, I always give accolades to them, uh, the folks up there, our Legion family does a great job um, putting this together every year, and with these adverse conditions, uh, it even worked out better. We even had fourteen units that decided to back out. So that parade was huge. I never see the back of it, other than standing on the podium out there, but there was a lot of, there was a lot of people in town, so thank you to all the residents who showed up. Um, as I always do, I wanna thank this group of folks because regardless of what a lot of other people may say on Facebook or anything else, uh, I, I think we do work hard. We try to do for the city, and that also goes for all of our, all of our city staff, Harvey and all of his guys, uh, Mike, all his guys, and Tony and Colin, everybody that works so hard down here. Truly appreciate it, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. George?
Yes, I second what Larry said. I appreciate everything that our city staff does and the city manager and this commission. Um, I'm super excited to see another business come into town. Uh, I believe it shows great dedication and bravery, especially during this construction uh, era, I guess you could say, uh, but I wish you well and welcome to Buchanan. Um, I also wanna say that I'm super excited for the DDA board, and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing what all they accomplish and, uh, excited to see them working together, so uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Swam?
Hi, thank you to all those, all those that applied for the DDA positions. I congratulate those of you that were awarded. You have a monstrosity of a task on your plate and a lot to get done, so uh, we hope that we can support you with those, uh, challenges. And those of you that weren't selected, uh, I hope you'll still find a way to act, um, and engage and be part of that. You're, you're about, you have resources that you can bring to the table and, and continue to contribute, and we can use all hands on deck, so. Appreciate everybody that was involved in that, and congrats to those who were awarded.
Thank you. Uh, I couldn't agree more. I, I think the DDA interviews that Tony and I sat through, and I thank you for doing that and taking the time out of your day to sit through many, many hours, as it came to be, three days. Uh, it really made me aware of the amount of, of education and skill and talent that we have in the city. I already was aware, but then when you get to sit down and meet individuals and hear their history and where they came from and what, what their story was, how they, how they became part of Buchanan, how they're, they're living here for eighteen years plus for many of them, and, and some of them for a very short period of time, and what this city means to them is the same thing that means to each and every one of us, and why they're here is because of the people that are here. They, they come here and they find out that uh, we deeply care for every one of the individuals who show up, uh, even if they live in disagreements with some things that we do. It is, is pretty amazing the applicants we got. It's something I never would have thought we would have had after five years of being, uh, in a moment of pause. And I think what that did is that allowed us to see new businesses, uh, move to Buchanan, have a new vision. Uh, and we have one of them here before us, and it's gonna be exciting to see us have a rebirth. We have a good pot of money that's available to us, so we can do some great things right out of the gate. And, uh, when the TIF money comes in and then backfills that money, I think that the DDA's got a good task ahead of them to to revamp what the DDA had, uh, in the years past, so thank you to all the applicants, thank you to the individuals, uh, who put in their time, and if you did not make the board, it doesn't mean that you're not important to us. It means that, uh, you have value because, uh, your input has put us here in this place, uh, in years past, so uh, thank you to every one of the commissioners, thank you to the city staff and, uh, DPW, police, Rich Murphy, everybody. Just thank you so much for all your hard work. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Jansky.
Yep.
Weeden.
Whedon?
Yes.
Swin?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Thank you.